Okay, well called order of the regular city council meeting Monday, September 9th, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
Toby Nelson.
Michelle Otto.
Kirby Moyno.
Sam Solars.
David Paradise.
Jessica Banuel.
Jackie Hines.
Jared Vogie.
Dan Reamer.
Uh, there won't be an invocation tonight Pastor Kathy is sick, uh, but instead of that, uh, in honor of nine eleven coming up, I'd just like to take a moment of silence and remembrance of nine eleven. Thanks. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda.
Will make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
All vote aye. Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Uh, approval of the consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Uh, I just had one question as far as this goes. Looking through it, I saw that we paid our yearly subscription for the, uh, no before for the year. Uh, is that something that we're using that all staff and council members, anybody has a city email that we're using that? Cause we have to have that for insurance, right?
Yep. And, uh, yeah, everybody's doing monthly trainings. I get emails about who's completed and who's not, so.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure. I wanted to make sure we didn't run into any, we, cause we ran into that at my work one time that we didn't have stuff that was going on, so.
Yeah, it is used and helpful.
As tacky as they are.
Yes.
Uh, any further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
All vote aye. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Uh, I don't see the Wright County Sheriff's Office. Um, was there anything on that that we should be aware of? Um, moving on then, if he does come by, we'll skip back. We have a request for council action. Ms. Ashford Hellcamp?
I'm not very good at public speaking.
That's alright.
It's alright. Take your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Okay, sorry. I just got really nervous.
You're, you're okay. Just, just take your time.
Start, you can start by just saying your name and, and your address.
Yeah, okay, yeah, sorry. I'm Ashford Hellcamp. This is my husband Travis and our son Conrad. And I don't like public speaking, but I do, um, would like to address our interest in having chickens in the city of Montrose. Um, I grew up on a farm. I have had animals most of my life. Um, my husband and I had chickens in the city of Minneapolis. So what you see in front of you is Minneapolis's, uh, city ordinances for chickens or fowl. Um, and in general, I think that they're a really well presented and thorough example of chicken ordinances, um, particularly in urban settings. Um, there's been a big movement across America for trying to, uh, encourage households to have, you know, chickens in particular, um, but just more self sustainability. Chickens is a really approachable way for American households to feel more involved with their food. Be, um, it's an opportunity to educate their children about where food comes from. Um, it's a way to, um, yeah, I guess just be more connected to what we're doing, you know, in our everyday and, um, uh, sorry, I can't really, okay. Do you want to say?
Uh, yeah, okay. So chickens, I, I think that there's, we'll talk about the negative first. Like people are concerned about, you know, maybe smell or, um, dirtiness or things like that. They actually are generally pretty clean animals. Uh, they're very easy to care for. And I think as long as you keep it to a minimal number, so the six is what they allowed in Minneapolis, um, they don't really get out of hand. So I, and they're actually very nice peaceful animals. They don't fly out of the yard. They like to just eat insects and run around.
Yeah.
I really enjoyed having them previously. She actually, uh, um, her mother has a flock in Minnetoka as well. So this has been done in quite a few different cities, not just one city. Um.
Yeah, and on that subject, um, there are an increasing number of cities that are adopting chicken rules, not a decreasing number. So it's only on the rise. It's not on the decrease. Um, actually, quite honestly, when my husband and I were looking to move out of the cities, we really wanted to find a community just like Montrose, you know, that's connected to the people, small town, good people, kind people that are really paying attention to their neighborhoods. And I was really surprised that, that there weren't chickens allowed. So, um, I heard that it's been kind of, you know, what people want to adopt it before and then they didn't, um, come here and we're here. And I brought evidence and I have more evidence to support it too. But like he said too, chickens are really good. They actually eat a lot of insects, so they can actually help with local, you know, mosquito problems. I mean, we're all, we're in Minnesota, so we're always going to have those. Um, but they help with that. Their poop can actually be re, um, composted and used to improve the soil for gardeners. So, I mean, they're always, also chicken eggs that you raise yourself have been found to have twice the amount of omega three fatty acids and, um, vitamin E. So they're much more nutritious than most store bought eggs. Um, I guess that's it for my, for my spiel. Okay. Do I sit down now?
No, you have to stand up there a little bit longer. I'm just kidding. Go ahead. Have a seat.
Uh, discussion on the topic of chickens. Anybody want to go first?
We do this about once a year.
About every year and a half or so, yeah.
The last twelve that I know of, yeah.
May I ask you something? Is the discussion open or is it just you guys?
It, yeah, I mean, it's still, uh, your subject right now, so.
Okay. Um, why is it presented and then why has it been refused every time it's been presented?
So the, the two main reasons are enforcement and then support. Um, you know, and you validated that, uh, in speaking. And the last time we brought chickens up, I was the one who argued up here for quite a long time at one meeting last year and said, we need to give this a shot. People want chickens. Let's have planning and zoning look this over. We spent the taxpayer money to go out, have a public hearing, put notices out, and then there was only one person who showed up and that person was against chickens. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not online. I'm like on Facebook, um, for any kind of personal account. So I don't read what goes on there on a regular basis unless somebody shares it with me. But from what I understand, people talk about how there was no notification of there was a, a public hearing. But from my understanding, there was posts by the city. There was council members who shared that post. Um, but that's just the, there was no support. There was nobody that showed up saying, we want them. And so it made the planning and zoning's decision very, very easy to say no. Um, the other part of it is enforcement. We, we have trouble with getting people to, you know, maintain order for their dogs and their cats and keeping up with those ordinances. And then we got to put chickens in the mix. Um, I don't remember who it was, but there was a crack about, uh, the chicken police that we would have, it might've been Tom. Um, I can blame him because he's not here.
That's fair.
But we just, we don't have a way to, to really enforce it. And to, if we do allow chicken coops, we need to have somebody who then goes out and inspects those. And then it's not just one person, it's multiple people because you can't go on a resident's property unless there's two staff members. And like I said, I'm in favor of chickens. I've fought for it in the past. And then when it came time to show up and show support, there was, there was just nothing there.
Can I ask you something else, Toby? So, um, one of the things that we found, so if you read the Minneapolis ordinances, it talks about how you have to seek, um, approval from your immediate neighbors within like, it depends, St. Paul is, I think, a hundred and fifty feet, but not across the street. And then Minneapolis is all bordering neighbors have to give, that's, but they're, they're, what I'm, I guess, the, if you read the details of the ordinances, there is actually more local involvement even beyond just city council. Like the neighbors do get to have some say, more or less. And we can, you know, write that into the ordinances however we decide to do that, um, we as a city, of course. Um, but, you know, just that it, it isn't like an all or nothing thing. I think if we let it, allow it and see how it goes, I mean, laws and, you know, rules change all the time. Doesn't mean we can't pull things back if chicken shit hits the fan, but let's just give it a try, you know?
Yeah, and I've, I mean, I've been for chickens also. I just, I think we came up with a, a fairly good ordinance that we pulled some stuff from Delano. Um, I know last year Buffalo approved chickens and, you know, from last count I heard they had five licenses and no complaints, you know? And at, at, at some point, we're going to have to either keep going with this every year and a half or move this along and say, okay, let's, let's approve chickens. I mean, again, I got no problems with it. I think we've got a pretty solid groundwork for an ordinance as it is. So that's kind of my two cents on it.
Also another thing, our neighbors in Minneapolis had reservation and, you know, with some of them, kind of like you guys, some of them were all on board and others were like, oh, you know, what's this going to do? But by the end of it, by the time we moved, everybody loved it. And I mean, they gave us an opportunity to connect with our neighbors in a different way. We brought eggs to our neighbors. I mean, it's just, it's really cool. Kids would come over and see, hey, this is a real chicken. This is a real chicken coop. It's, it's just a cool opportunity, I think, for a lot of people to learn about chickens. And it's not overwhelming like it seems. It's actually pretty simple.
Yeah, I think it's always been lack of support that has been the hardest part to get o- over. And you'll have a public hearing and.
Planning and zoning's not really willing to approve something for if one household out of fourteen hundred show up.
Right. I think that's, that's been the hardest part at least that I've seen.
This has been happening every year and a half. It's not just one household, right?
But nobody comes.
But it's been zero households that have come up to support it. That's, that's the thing.
And you might see more people and, you know, I guess if a couple just approved it, I mean, they're literally, like I follow all these websites for the state of Minnesota. It's, it's an adding number. Cities aren't adopting it and then stopping it. It's, it's only getting more cities, so.
Right. And I'm, I mean, I'm not disputing that fact. I think it's like ninety-three percent of the top one hundred populated cities allow chickens. I mean, I agree with you. I mean, it is, it is a, I wouldn't say it's booming, but it is something that is being allowed. But as we look at it from a, a bigger lens as far as a city goes, you know, if people are wanting chickens and nobody comes to us and says, hey, when we're holding a public hearing, nobody comes here and says, yeah, I want chickens, it, it makes it that much more difficult for us to say, okay, now we've got a number of people that actually want chickens here. We can probably move this forward. If we continue to have these public hearings and nobody shows up in favor and, you know, we've got people who are here against it, I mean, it's, it's hard to say yes when nobody's here in support.
Well, we are nobody.
Right. I'm not, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying that at all.
I mean, I get that, but, but we're obviously not the only ones in favor of it or wouldn't keep coming up. So I think wherever the resistance is, maybe we need to start asking the people that are resisting against it, what the real issues are. Cause I hear you if you say there aren't resources to, you know, approve the chicken coops. I get that. Let me volunteer. I will always have people's chicken coops. Like let's write it into the ordinance that we make it possible instead of just keep putting walls up because that's not functioning then, you know? You can't just have roadblocks up everywhere. You, you want people to feel like there are opportunities, not just, you're stuck in the mud.
Yep. And again, I think, I think we've got a solid, solid baseline for an ordinance that we've pulled from Delano and some other surrounding cities. It's, it's, it's again, it's the, nobody shows up in support of the chickens. It's hard for us to sit here and say yes, when we've got people who show up against it and we don't hear anything from people that are for it.
But you guys are in the city council. That is what you're there for. You guys are the votes.
Unfortunately, we've heard from more people that are against it.
More like the one person that showed up every year and a half of them?
But we have people that show up every public hearing against it. And unfortunately, nobody shows up for it. So last, what, a year?
I don't know they're hearing that because I was rallying the troops.
That costs a lot. I mean, what does it cost for us to continue to do public hearings?
What does it cost to just try the chickens for a couple years and see how it goes? No, I mean, for real. What, what, what's the issue with just trying it? Just try it. Chickens have been around since the beginning of time. Hostels all across America have them. Why is this right here? Where are we so stuck in the mud?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say we're, go ahead, Erin.
Sounds like it.
As far as the bedding or the compost or the feces, what, what did you do with that?
We used to do it.
Does the city compost?
No, no.
They really allow it.
So.
I guess it's never really been brought up before, but I don't see why they'd ever put it in the compost pile.
So Ashford?
What was, what was your question that you had for Jess Michelle? Cost?
Oh, cost of public hearings. Cause we have to.
There is obviously some cost to that, to have the planner draw everything up again, have the public hearing and have everybody come in and do that. Um, I just don't know that planning and zoning would recommend moving it forward.
Right.
Still, um, or want to talk about it yet again. We've had, you know, s- six or seven public hearings since I've been here. So.
Yeah.
Eight maybe.
Yeah. And so unfortunately, when, um, I had my neighbor two doors down, they had chickens. I honestly didn't care that they had chickens until they started taking their chicken poop and throwing it in our pond. So, um, that makes me wonder, people don't really clean up after their dogs. Where's the chicken? I mean, I can trust that you guys would do that for your gardens, but what about everybody else? Who we have to send letters to about cleaning up dog poop and all that kind of stuff?
And that's a valid point because it is definitely, you know, that's an help to the community environment and to your community. Um, but I guess I feel like if we live our lives, you know, always thinking about the, the lowest common denominator, how do you progress from that? You know? I mean, I will be like the number one chicken advocate and make sure, I'll be the chicken police, you know? Sign me up for the chicken police. I'll volunteer. Like however long I need to do it. But I'm here, trying as long as I can.
David or Toby? Either?
Just try it.
I mean, I, three years ago, uh, unbeknown to me at the time, neighbor behind and neighbor across the street, they had chickens. The way I found out was I was sitting on the front porch with my neighbors and chickens started walking by us and we had to herd them back into the neighbor's yard. There, there is going to be, no matter the animal or chickens, um, there's going to be irresponsible owners. There is already for dogs and cats and any other animal. Um, I don't know what our limitations are for enforcement, if we can have private enforcement of that or if it has to come from the city. Cause I know that's the biggest issue I see is being able for enforcement purposes. I, I don't, it doesn't matter to me one way or another. I'm not going to be going out and getting chickens. I have a brother-in-law that does raise plenty of farm animals up on his farm. Um, I'm not cut out to raise chickens or other farm animals. Just don't have the time in the day. Um, but I'm not against other people doing it as long as it's not infringing on other people's happiness overall, I guess.
I mean, it just sounds like you're a great advocate for this. Um, but in order to change the minds of the people that have been here for years, not only planning and zoning, but people that live here, I mean, I'd recommend to you that grassroots effort, get, get some signatures. Get as many as you can.
I would agree.
You can get support behind it.
They need to come here.
But they need to show up as well. Like we, we are, we're here to vote, not on what we believe in. We vote on what the city wants us to vote on.
The voice of the people.
Yeah. So if you, I mean, you're going to have to grassroots this. That, that's how you're going to change it. So.
And then from there, you're going to have to really sell it to planning and zoning. Cause that's where all of them.
Which of you are on planning and zoning?
Sam.
You don't need to sell it to me.
He's just liaising.
He just is kind of there for support. He does not have a vote. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a vote, but you don't need to sell it on me. So.
Yeah, I mean, overall, I don't think any of us are necessarily against chickens. It's just, and I have not been here for one of the special meetings that have been held. I have not been here that long yet on council. Um, but from what I've heard from past ones is that when the, when the meeting comes, nobody shows up in support. And I see it, I see it on social media all the time. But.
Where'd you find it? Tell me because I'll, I'll.
Oh, just on the local pages. I mean.
You'll, you'll see it pop up every once in a while.
Yeah, it's not all the.
The off topic to what, what the, uh, what the post is.
Yeah. If you post about chickens, if you post about chickens, you'll get replies.
Yeah.
Yep. Pro and, and, and against.
Okay, so let's get, we'll just start protesting.
Leave the pitchforks at home.
What you hear from the city is like protests or the M V games, nice and quiet.
Bring that here.
You need any girls on the chicken conversation here?
No.
No?
You gonna make any motions at this time?
Okay.
Are you gonna make a motion at this time?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Yeah, just, you go through those ordinances and, you know, pick and choose what you like and what you don't like. So that next time I come, you can have good proper inspection.
Sounds good.
I mean, this is the next one to do. I'll, I'll rally the troops.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
City council.
Uh, I had city council and budget meeting.
Um, I had city council, the budget meeting, um, celebrate Montrose, Carver Field, which we all did, rededication. Um, that's it.
Uh, council, special council. Uh, I missed the budget meeting, but I had an individual one with Jackie. Uh, the highway twelve safety meeting. Um, twenty twenty-five is when they are doing highway twelve through Montrose.
You're okay.
In, in the meeting, they said twenty twenty-seven and I thought that Connie and I and the person from Howard Lake were going to jump across the desk when they said, um, twenty twenty-seven. It's like another two years? We've already had this pushed five years already. Can we? And they said, oh, sorry. Yes, it is twenty twenty-five. So, um, it'll be coming through and doing that in twenty twenty-five. And I believe we just got the final plans from the state from what they said for everything that's going to happen. Um, and then of course, as Michelle had mentioned, the, uh, Carver Field rededication.
Uh, budget, special council meeting, council meeting and the Carver Field rededication.
Council meeting, special council, uh, like Kirby, private meeting with Jackie regarding the budget and, uh, celebrate Montrose.
Fire department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On your packet is the August twenty twenty-four activity report. Uh, very busy month. Um, kind of up on calls and then August is always a busy time with, uh, end of summer and things that we're trying to get completed throughout the year. Um, one acknowledgement on there is to Neil Myhoffer. Um, he's the gentleman who we paid to help us with our assistance to firefighters grant that we were awarded. Um, he's been a great help both in writing it and through the closeout process here, which will take two to three years. Um, so he's kind of been in my back pocket and in my ear constantly just so that we can work on getting things, uh, taken care of. We paid six hundred dollars for his service and he's gonna earn every penny of it when, uh, an award is made. So, um, he's been a great help. So I just wanted to make a special acknowledgement to him. So, uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, DNR grant. Uh, this is just for information. We were awarded the fiscal year twenty twenty-five DNR Rural Assistance to Firefighters grant. It's a fifty fifty grant. We were awarded twenty-five hundred dollars from the DNR, which means we have to put twenty-five hundred dollars in from our budget. Um, we're going to be using it for getting some nozzles and some hand tools and stuff like that. So, um, great to see that we're getting selected for some of these grants and funding opportunities for what we need it for. So, that's all I have for the fire department.
You gonna stay up there?
I'm just gonna stay right here.
Okay. Anything for fire department and stuff? Emergency management?
Uh, that would be me again. Um, so looking for project approval for ARPA funds. Um, I've been working with Dan and Jackie on getting project approvals. Um, here today to get approval for two of the projects, depending on where you guys see them at. Um, talking with some council members and staff, um, these were probably the two highest priority things. Um, first one is a generator at city hall. Um, this is through Midwest Electric and Generator. They're the same company that, that did the generator for the community center and fire station. Um, their quote for that generator came in at fourteen thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. Um, that includes the generator and all of the labor to install it, including the piping of the natural gas line over to it.
I'll make a motion to purchase a generator, uh, from Midwest Generator for a total of fourteen thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents to come out of the ARPA funds.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
All vote aye. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Uh, next one is courtesy of Dan. Um, got this quote. Um, it's from Joe Mock siding. It's for gutters and window replacement, one window replacement, that window, um, here at the community center. That window has some leaks and, um, some issues with it is my understanding. And the gutters are in need of some serious TLC repair replacement. So, the total for that one was four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for those.
So that's for the, all of it as far as gutters and downs boats?
All the gutters and downs boats, yes.
Okay. And the one window?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid of four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars from Joe Mock siding to come from the ARPA funds budget.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
All vote aye. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
And then an update on where we're at with the other items at this point. So with those two items that you, uh, passed today, there is thirty-six thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents remaining of the ARPA funds that we have to get allocated by December thirty-first of this year. Um, I have a meeting with Russell Security tomorrow. I'm gonna, uh, go around with Ryan and Dan if you want, um, to some of the doors, um, primarily at the wellhouse and also down at the plant and kind of deep dive into those doors and see which ones need true replacement and which ones can maybe just get some.
TLC.
TLC to it and some care and maybe some minor repairs and stuff. Um, we know that there's a couple of doors that are really bad. Um, we know that there's a couple of doors that are really bad. Um, a couple of doors that are really bad might not even be worth repairing, because we don't know what the future looks like and it may still get us by, but, um, I think with their expertise and kind of knowing what we're going into more frequently than not, um, I think we can get a pretty good idea. When Dan had the five doors quoted for wellhouse number two on Garfield, the price was like 24,000, 26,000 for all five doors, I think. Um, so doors aren't cheap. Um, we wanna try and stretch this to the best that we can and still get it utilized. Um, but some of those doors are in desperate need of, um, some repair replacement stuff, so. Um, hopefully I'll be able to come back to, with you next month with the door and the final security stuff with the locking and everything like that through Russell Security here, so.
Perfect. Any questions on emergency management for Kevin? Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Kevin.
Uh, I am going to skip back up to item seven now, um, since Officer Brown is here for the Wright County Sheriff's Office update.
Hello, hello?
I wasn't gonna let you get by without speaking this time.
Sorry for my tardiness. Um, I think I missed last month, um.
I wasn't gonna say anything about it. You didn't have to bring it up.
Had an upkeep last month, though. Um, in July, we only had 50 traffic stops compared to the last month, 62. So we're getting those numbers up slowly and, but surely. Um, still around that 220 mark for total calls for service, so that's good, staying busy out here. That's all I really got. You guys have any questions?
Not specifically for you, but, uh, Danny, what has the reading been on the, uh, on the radar on 12? What have we been getting out of that for any data?
We have a lot of data, it's been there since.
Well, it's been there for a while, yeah.
Um, about 30% of people are speeding, if you consider one mile an hour over speeding. It seems to, you kind of see it on the chart that it's slowing them down a little bit more, but. Yeah, it's about 30 to 33% of people are going over the speed limit, right there.
That's that one by the park?
Yeah.
Uh, anything for Officer Brown?
Um, I've seen a lot of, around surrounding communities of a lot of break-ins and car stuff. Are you seeing anything more out this way?
I haven't noticed anything in Montrose, now we got that issue in, uh, Waverly, I think towards that in the winter.
We had some in McFord.
Yep.
Okay.
But I don't think we've had anything specifically in Montrose that I've seen.
Good.
They know to stay away.
Yeah.
That's right.
Is it, is it, it's more of a crime of opportunity rather than, you know, breaking windows and?
Absolutely, it's more of the cars on like the roadway, not, not necessarily in the driveways. That dark, not well-lit areas, gotta go for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thanks, you, I made a coke.
Uh, parking wreck. That's so cute, Sam.
Good evening, mayor and council, uh, pretty short list for you today. Um, upcoming events, we have movies in the parks, September 13th, 7:30, Haunted Mansion, uh, just right outside there. Uh, we had our park dedication for Eddie Carver, rededicating Carver Field, great success, everything's been as smooth as possible. Um, I think you've very much appreciated it, I got to chat with them a little after. Very nice experience all around, so hopefully to use that park, uh, more often for any kind of events in the future. Uh, just as, uh, some of our last notes, we're looking into getting some kind of painting events. Uh, we're getting some information from like senior painting, or just like kind of the painting classes, you bring canvas, that kind of thing. Uh, we are laminating our sidewalk chalk certificates, and I still gotta hand those out and get some pictures, and we'll get those out. And we have our brochure photo contests still ongoing. Uh, working on our, um, 2025 calendar, uh, with all of our events. And last but not least, I believe you got a digital copy of the parks and trail plan, so.
Nice.
Review it at your leisure. Uh, we have the Word documents, so any changes that you can, so dream of, uh, we can do in-house. We don't have to worry about it, it's a nice, wonderful, updated document, and, yeah. That's all Parks and Rec really has to offer.
From what I've seen so far, great job.
Yes, fantastic job.
So, we had, uh, canceled due to a COVID scare this year, but we'll meet up in October, and, yeah. Let you know if anything else comes up.
Any questions for Josh? Thanks, Josh.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Uh, engineer.
Evening, mayor, council, and closing your packet this evening is related to the 2024 Street Improvement Project, and it's based on a request received from the contractor, uh, who council ordered the project to, um, on July 9th, or July 9th, we received the bids, but council subsequently in August ordered the contract. The contractor has requested a change order in the amount of $21,710 for, um, supplier discounts that were lost as a result of awarding sections B and D in the amount of 251,000 of the overall 1.225 million dollar project, which is approximately an 80% reduction from the overall total project bid. Um, a couple of options are outlined in the memo. Uh, ultimately, when the contractor reached out to us, uh, we wanted to bring this to council for a discussion. Uh, contractor didn't specifically state it to us, however, um, I am not optimistic that any work would be done if this was not moved forward. Um, looking at the request and understanding the volume of the work that was reduced, um, I didn't think that it was, um, an outrageous request, and that's why it's before you. Otherwise, if it would have, um, been reducing the project by 10%, this wouldn't be before you, but, um, wanted this to be ultimately a, a decision or considered by council, uh, not solely by, by staff. So, that's what's before you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can regarding the request.
I, he, even with the additional 21,000, it's still below the next lowest quote.
Correct, it's approximately still 22,000 below the second lowest quote for sections B and D, yes.
So I guess the question is, do we wanna complete the project for almost $22,000 more than we originally planned? Or do we wanna scrap it? Because I would imagine, at this point in the year, he would probably say, I'm not doing it, I have other projects. And then if we rebid it out next year, it's gonna be more than $22,000 more than what? That's just my guess, but.
So, GMH Asphalt was also the contractor that did the 2023 Street Improvement Project. Um, based on their workmanship, they did a very nice job. And if this is not approved, I'm confident that we would not get it done this fall. Um, and I'm not necessarily convinced that if we rebid it, that they wouldn't necessarily bid it either. So, um, that being said, those are some of the, those are some of the reasons why it's on your, um, agenda this evening.
These were the two worst areas that we identified that need to be done. I hate that we have to increase our price on this, but we are in a.
We're in a pinch.
Bit of a pickle here.
Jackie, this still keeps us under what we had looked at for what was available, correct?
Is anybody against increasing the price by 21,710?
I mean, if we don't, we don't have a project done.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, against it? Sure, I don't wanna pay more, but.
We still need to do it, we do.
It's almost like saying.
Picture?
Yeah.
Blackmail.
No, I mean, I think that's just unfortunately the way we bid it out.
Yeah.
If we would've bid it out, individual sections, you probably would've seen that.
We probably would've paid more.
1.2 million.
There's a question from public. Does contractor sign a contract for the amount?
So.
Or do they ask for different amounts before they sign the contract?
Mayor, council, to answer the question from the public, the contract has not been signed.
It's not really changed order to the negotiation in order to sign a contract.
And, and I, I get his perspective as a business owner, he went from having a 1.2 million dollar project to a 250,000 dollar project.
Decreased it.
It's, uh, quite, quite a decrease. I, it, it sucks. Do we wanna get those projects done for that amount?
I don't think we have a choice, really.
Well, um, do we have to get a new agreement signed? No? Okay.
This is just for a.
No, I, okay.
It's for the, it would be added to the industrial part.
That was the part that I was.
The, the email says section B.
Yeah, no change to that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of holding our feet to the fire here, but it needs to be done. And, I mean, if we say no, I mean, they did a pretty decent job on the reconstruction. We say no, and then.
Burn a bridge?
Yeah, burn a bridge.
Well, your next, your next lowest bid is still 20-plus thousand higher.
Right.
Like I said, are we against it? Yeah, I don't wanna pay more money.
Right.
But I'm still saving 20-plus thousand dollars from the next bidder. So if they no-bid it, I'm paying 40,000 more than I'm paying now, instead of, you know, 20.
So one more question from public, if you have money. Can you call that other bidder and offer him that amount for the amount that's left? Is that an option or no?
If their lowest bid was 40,000 more than what we're looking at, I don't see them taking a 20-some thousand dollar pay cut to come and do it.
So it's 40, 40,000 or, or higher for the 1.225 million dollar? So, no?
No, it's, it's 40,000 less than, what was it, 200?
Just the two sections that we decided to do.
Not the total bid, just the two sections we're looking at, they were 40,000.
They do this all day long, so that's why I'm asking.
Do I hear a motion one way or the other? Anybody? Go on once.
I'll make a motion to approve it. The increase in pay.
The increase of the 21,700?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Vote aye, Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thanks, council, and, uh, we'll reach out to the contractor, and likely at your next meeting, we'll, we'll have the, uh, I guess, the contractor will execute the contract based on that, your action this evening. Um, and they have also indicated that they will get the work done this fall, based on the action that you just took, so. That's all I had this evening.
Questions for Jared? Public Works?
Uh, good evening, mayor, council, uh, first thing under Public Works is, uh, road repairs. Uh, number one is Aspen and Arapahoe Road Patch Repair. Uh, if you go to page 72, that is the total of the repair, and then page 73 has it kind of outlined uh, where the section is going to be. One more page. There in the pen. Um, that road is almost down to gravel in that section, in some spots. Um, it's pretty rough.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it was voted like the number one repair in our eyes right now. So I'm looking for approval of the mid-Minnesota hot mix on page 72 of, uh, 29,420.
And one motion for all three items that are listed is fine. I'll make a motion to approve the 29,420 for the, um, Midwest Minnesota Hot Mix Blacktop Repair.
I'll second that. Further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Vote aye, Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item number two, um, is the quantity of 56 manhole repairs.
Damn. Never mind, never mind. Nothing, never mind, I thought we, I thought you did all three of them right away, so.
Where I could talk about, you can just accept them all, whatever way you wanna do it. 56 manhole repairs for Phobe Construction, so what this would be is actually pulling the manhole. Um, the casting, the rings need to be repaired, and then the manhole needs to be lowered down below grade. So the first part is the work on the manhole, uh, 56,885.
56 manhole repairs.
Um, these are manholes that were picked by Public Works Street Department that they feel need to be, well, not only street department, but sewer, um, that need to be repaired and lowered before the snow flies. And then, leading into part three is the mid-Minnesota hot mix, which is the patch work around the manhole once it's repaired, because they have to cut them out, right? Um, the tarring around them and the lowering of the said manholes. Um, looking for approval on both those quotes, uh, page 75. I got these in pretty late last week, so sorry for the scribbling and the circling, but, uh, you can see the totals, I'll take any questions you got.
They both said they could get this done this year before.
Yeah, and that's why I had to get them in on this packet. We got them Thursday morning, and she needed the packet Thursday, but, yeah, so.
In said budget, do we have money for this?
I can't hear any, what?
It in the budget.
Budget.
Yes.
Roughly 106,000 on this?
There's more to come, but yeah, um, this will be taken out of street repair budget of 100,000, storm and sanitary of 25,000, uh, street maintenance material of 8,300, and some of it will be coming out of sanitary repairs too, but there is money in there for this.
So that's for all three, right?
Yep.
It'll be the whole project, yeah.
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 Are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Phobe Construction and Midwest Hot Mix to complete the 56 manhole repairs, road patching, and the road patching around the manholes.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Vote aye, Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, uh, mayor, council, item, line item two, section one, page 70, starts on 76. Um, earlier this year, it was determined, uh, Governor Walz made a cybersecurity mandate that we had to have our SCADA system pretty much gone over, security-wise, and this is the recommendation of what we need to do to meet those criteria. Um, first part in it is the contract for service for in control. Um, page 80 of the thing, it breaks it down into quarterly, I'm just looking to get it approved for the entire year, or the entirety of everything on that page.
Total for the year is sixty two seventy four?
Yes, correct.
Is that every year that that'll be the cost or just?
I'm gonna guess, and I'm gonna guess it's only gonna go up.
It's most likely gonna go up. Like everything else.
What what are their guarantees on that?
I.
I mean, I'm just, I'm going off of experience from when I was in at an IT company. I went to a seminar where the guy literally hacked into the wind turbines in California while we were there. So.
When it comes to I this IT part, this is why I go with somebody else. It's not my expertise side of things, so.
Well, as as somebody who's actually been working on this plan for the city of Buffalo for the past couple of months, um, yeah, I mean, there is no guarantees, obviously. I mean, somebody wants to get in, they're gonna get in, but I mean.
Something.
Yeah, it's it's definitely better than absolutely having nothing, so.
I was just curious what their action plan is for.
As far as like.
Regular inspection, testing, and maintenance of your control system.
Yeah, I mean, everything looks pretty good. They're doing a lot of backups off site. I. I didn't, I didn't have any questions with it, so.
Okay.
I I felt pretty good with it.
Um, the cost of this would be split into three counts too, so it's not just all coming out of one. Water, wastewater, sanitary, so.
I don't think it's a bad idea that we're putting the security piece on that, the extra, you know, comfort. It would, it would be terrible if we lost control of our own.
Yes, it would.
Wastewater plant because somebody hacked into it. Um, my, my problem is just these continued mandates that get handed to us that we have to pay for. Um.
Yep.
Same thing last year with. You know, the the sick leave that, you know, we just, it gets handed down to us and we have to pass the cost on. Not that, it's not a good idea to do it anyway, but being forced to do it is is different in my opinion than that, but. I mean, that being said, I'd, I'll make a motion to accept the bid, um, or the proposal amount of six thousand two hundred and seventy four dollars. From In Control Incorporated for, um. Wastewater Treatment Plan Automation and Cyber Security Service Plan.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
How about aye, Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Council. Part two of this continuation is the recommendation, um, to. Purchase a firewall and we have to replace the one we got and kind of my understanding is beef it up. Um. Page eighty three is kind of the quote on that. Um, of one thousand nine hundred and sixty two dollars, looking for approval of the purchase of that.
I'll make a motion to approve the one thousand nine sixty two for the hardware firewall replacement.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
How about aye, Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Council. Item number three on page eighty five of your packet is a bid proposal of the purchase. Of a complete hydrant that was taken out by a semi earlier this summer on Highway twelve. Um. Putting in this in the packet, I didn't know, but we should recoup all these costs from that insurance company. I still need the approval for that kind of money to purchase.
Yeah, we just have to buy it upfront and they're gonna pay the bill after the fact.
Mind you, this is not the cost of digging it. So there's gonna be more costs, but we should be covered.
Which again will be reimbursed for.
Mm-hmm. Yes. That's what the insurance company is saying right now.
Um, I will make a motion to approve the fire hydrant repair quote of seven thousand two hundred thirty eight dollars and ninety one cents for Core and Main.
I'll second.
Further discussion? How about aye, Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and, um, not a lot of updates. If you have any questions, I'll take those.
Any questions for Danny?
No more money from us?
What's that?
You got enough money from us?
Yeah, I went into Monday morning with nothing on it, and then by Wednesday I had all this on it, yeah.
Go back to Friday. Um, storm sewer repair?
Of, are we talking industrial park here?
Yep.
We heard from them at the end of the day, they might start Wednesday.
Okay.
What, uh, what factors into them starting on Wednesday?
I'm assuming this is a little side gig job, so it's not priority for them right now at this point.
Can you answer Danny?
All right, uh, old business, community center and city hall janitorial services quotes.
Uh, Mayor and Council, including your packet, are the quotes that were included in the packet last time. Uh, we did receive a couple of quotes, um, from some people. Um, we did have some that were, the it was, the scope of this was too much for them, and then there were some that just didn't have insurance or like a, an actual business, so. Um, and we received one today, but I don't see what company this is from, and I don't have any other information, so I wouldn't consider that. Legitimate, I don't. Is that the one I had? Yeah, I don't see any company information, so. I didn't, yeah, I didn't know that we had closed the bids already, so I did get a bid from Liz's Cleaning Service out of Rockford. Um, and that's what. Or what cleaning service? Liz Cleaning Service out of Rockford. Otherwise, the quotes that are in the packet are for real clean, and that is for one hundred and sixty five dollars per time to clean at the community center. And three hundred and eighty five dollars, uh, to clean city hall per month, once per week. And then classic clean was one hundred and forty dollars per time to clean at the community center or four hundred and twenty dollars per month for a once per week clean. And then three hundred and sixty five dollars per month for a once weekly cleaning at city hall.
What was the? Can I see the price on the other one again?
The one maybe you changed?
Yeah.
Community, community center, a hundred and eighty dollars per clean and city hall is a hundred and thirty dollars per week. That was, um. Liz's Fresh and Green.
So they're both once a week at city hall?
Both would be, uh, once a week at city hall. Uh, real clean is three, three eighty five per month and classic is three sixty five. For city hall. Classic clean is less on both.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do I hear a motion on any of the bids?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Classic Cleaning for one forty per month for the community center and for per, per cleaning and three sixty five per month for one day a week for the Montrose City Hall.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Does this take effect January one, right?
She asked about the start date, January one.
Any other discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
How about aye, Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Uh, new business, twenty twenty five preliminary budget and levy.
Mayor and Council, included in your packet tonight is, uh, the preliminary budget for twenty twenty five. Um, currently, our tax capacity for twenty twenty four is sitting at, uh, roughly four point one seven five million. Estimated from the county as of August twentieth, um, capacity for twenty five is three point eight two three million, so we are decreasing by roughly three hundred and fifty two thousand dollars. With that, we've tightened a lot of things up in expenses. Um, and so for approval tonight in the packet is, um, the proposed levy. Remind you, this is only preliminary, it's not final. So we can only decrease from here, we cannot go higher. Um. Do notice on here, the percentage change says twenty two percent. Please keep in mind that's only expenditures, that doesn't take into effect the capacity and the expenditures to get the levy rate. So we are looking at roughly right now an increase of about seventeen and a half percent.
That, as previously stated, can always go down.
Mm-hmm.
There's no guarantee that this is the, the final one is, you always have to overshoot.
Correct.
Something else comes up, like as we were surprised with, three hundred and almost four hundred thousand dollars that we thought we were going to have for next year that is no longer there.
And our capacity can still go up for twenty five. Um, it's not final, so there's still a lot of key components that need to come in and get finalized. Um, and with this plan, we are planning for, um, five hundred thousand to be put into capital improvements for streets for future use as well.
And this is something that's affecting everybody across the board in Ray County, not just us, correct?
Correct. The majority of cities in the county, I think, have seen a decrease in capacity.
So it looks like it's the first one since like twenty twelve, a decrease?
Yep, it's been a while.
Do you hear a motion?
What do we need a motion of? Just to accept?
To accept the seventeen and a half. To accept the preliminary levy so that we can send it to the county for certification.
I'll make a motion to accept the preliminary levy.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
How about aye, Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Well, that, that is bad, but I was reading a story in another state that they miscalculated people's taxes and people had a bill that went from a thousand dollars a year to thirty thousand dollars a year. Because of a clerical error and it was too late to reprint their tax statements. Well, they have to go back and reamend everything for the entire year, but yes, a little bit of a zero in the wrong spot.
decimal points are important.
Anyway, um, Creekside Hollow Preliminary Platte.
Mayor and Council, included in the packet for this evening is a memo from, uh, the Creekside Hollow developer, Robert Mahachek. Um, requesting another year extension. The last time they did this was September of twenty twenty three. So they still are a valid preliminary plat because they have asked for the extension. Um, I asked the engineer, the planner, if there was anything keeping us from, um, approving another extension. They said, no, as long as they've done it, um, in a timely manner in the past and, and not let their preliminary plat expire. So, um, it is okay to approve it if, if you are, will, um, in agreement with that.
I don't see a reason not to approve it. Um, we had gotten somebody that was interested in that property and we'd come to an agreement a couple of years ago, so. I don't see a reason why we don't just keep that going until the housing market can be a little more, um.
Friendly?
Yeah. For everybody involved.
Just need a motion to approve a one year extension.
I will make a motion to approve a one year extension for Creekside Hollow Preliminary Platte.
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
How about aye, Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Uh, community lawn care, Christmas light decorating quote.
Uh, Mayor and Council staff, uh, got this quote, um, at the request of a council member, um, so to do. Three trees and the picnic building at Veterans Park is two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. If you're interested in that, it's not. Not a need, obviously, but. Isn't this what? Just an option. Isn't this what Public Works already does? Huh? Yes.
I mean, they do it.
Yes.
Kinda, yeah.
They do it.
They do.
Wouldn't say it's done well. I would like to think it looked nice out there.
We can educate. So is it three trees at nine fifty per tree plus the seven seventy four for a total? Yeah, for the total is twenty eight fifty for the park. So again, this is just an option. We just wanted to present it to you guys to say that we, we, we did look into it, um, and this is what we found, so.
Is this a yearly cost or something that goes down? Is this including like light, lights and stuff that they purchased with this or?
It includes the lights. They didn't say whether that's significant help, you know, they didn't price the house, that's all the difference between what the lights will be.
Yeah, I was just gonna say like, is, is it every year then? Is that the yearly one that gonna come down because we already paid for the lights or is that gonna be?
The set price.
Is that, is that a set price?
Like the lights are included in this.
I would guess it's a rental of the lights.
The rental of the lights, yeah.
You get a discount on the. No, that's. But you might, you never know, yeah. No, I agree.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I can't in good conscience agree to this.
No. Is that by chance Casey Moline?
I have no idea. I didn't do this.
So no action? No action.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, and the last part of new business, uh, this is something we've done the last couple of years. Uh, it's a proclamation recognizing National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Infants Remembered in Silence Incorporated and many other nonprofit organizations work with thousands of parents all over the state of Minnesota and across the United States. Who have experienced the death of a child during pregnancy through early childhood. And many of these parents live in, deliver in, have a child, die in, or bury a child in our community. And Infants Remembered in Silence Incorporated, a five oh one C three nonprofit organization, was founded in nineteen eighty seven. Thirty seven years ago to offer support for parents whose child slash children died from miscarriage, ectopic pregnancy, molar pregnancy, stillbirth, neonatal death, birth defects, sudden unexpected death of a child. Sudden infant death syndrome, illness, accidents, and all other types of infants and early childhood death. And bereaved parents around the world remember their children annually on October fifteenth. And bereaved parents around the world remember their children annually on October fifteenth with candle lighting at seven PM. Some will remember their child slash children in their homes, while others will remember them at small gatherings around the state, across the nation, and around the world. And this would unify these parents in tribute to their children. And in nineteen eighty-eight, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed October as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. And in honor of the thousands of children that die each year in Minnesota, Infants Remembered in Silence Incorporated respectfully requested that October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four be recognized as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Be it resolved by the City Council of Montrose, Minnesota, this ninth day of September twenty No open forum. Upcoming meetings, planning and zoning on September eleventh, seven PM here at the community center. EDA Tuesday, September seventeenth, twelve PM, city hall. The city council workshop for the end of the month was canceled. Park and Rec meeting October first, five thirty PM, Montrose City Hall. Next planning and zoning meeting after this month is October ninth, seven PM here at the Montrose Community Center with a public hearing for cannabis business regulations. And then the next city council meeting is October fourteenth, seven PM here at the community center. Acknowledgements, recognition, or announcements?
I, I would like to recognize Public Works, and for all the work you guys have done over at Carver Field. I spent the weekend over there. I'd like to give a lot of credit to Eddie Carver and his family, and all of his volunteers and friends. It was a very, it was a very nice event, something nice that happened in this city that I really got to sit out, enjoy a nice weekend, even though I'm getting too old to play softball nowadays. But, yeah, everybody, very well-run event, and everybody that did the rededication did a great job.
Yeah, I, I wanted to just thank Park and Rec for putting together the rededication. I think it was a, a great thing, whoever originally had the idea to do it. Eddie Carver and his family were all very appreciative of it. Also, for the Ray County Journal Press and the Delano Harrow Journal for covering the rededication. And then, wanted to thank the volunteers from Celebrate Montrose and the Ugly Bar for putting on the Celebrate Montrose, Montrose Days festivities this year.
I'll just touch on what you touched on earlier. Wednesday marks twenty-three years since nine eleven. A lot of us will always remember where we were that day. I just wanna express my gratitude to our firefighters and first responders everywhere.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I can't.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes five zero, we're adjourned.